So for those who have new, there's a copy of the budget. I'm gonna give like a quick little summary and a few points about this year's budget, just so you have a concept. For the public hearing portion, we canceled the public hearing to override the tax cap. This presented budget is under the 2% tax cap. And ultimately actually lowers the rate per thousand due to a slight increase of assessed value. If anyone, it's kind of a simple equation. The amount that you have to fill in your budget is determined by your assessed value and that's per thousand. So when there is development, business, homes, construction, increasing the assessment, the total assessment for the incorporated village, your taxes actually go down. And say, well, that maybe doesn't make sense, but in this case it does because our current village would not be burdened by the influx of 100 homes. There wouldn't be no change in the wastewater, there would be no change in the portable water, there would be no change in the linear roads that are plowed and maintained. There are vacant lots on existing roads and the school, most importantly, wouldn't be impacted either because they could double their population tomorrow and prop or triple, I got a hand signal, triple their population tomorrow and not really have to do more hires. Public school currently ratio is one on eight or even less. So it's an opportune time when I spoke at the last meeting and someone was in the public had emailed me and questioned what did I mean by growth? We have a plan for growth, we have a zoning law, we have analyzed our infrastructure and what it can tolerate. So when I said growth, I mean if you have a vacant lot and you want to move to Tannersville with a young family because you work remotely and you want to put two kids in the school, we have plenty of room for you, we love it, we have beautiful parks, we have one of the most beautiful spots in the whole Catskills if I had to say on my soapbox. So that's what I mean by that. In the grand scheme of growth and assessment value, added assessment value controls taxes and lowers taxes because the expenses of running an incorporated village does not go down. Insurances do not go down, payroll does not go down, utility costs do not go down. And it's a magic trick to think that we could always stay stable in a budget with all those escalated expenses. But the way you do that is you have growth, you have commercial growth, you have residential growth to offset those increases where the average person has been here for 40 years to say, boy, my taxes have been pretty stable and I'm awfully grateful. Or maybe even go in the opposite direction. So that is the atmosphere that we like to create, those are the facts. And that is an atmosphere that we want to create for this community. Respecting everyone's peace and silence and why they came to this mountain, in addition. And that's what zoning laws and planning are all about, preserving that balance. So that being said, I did make a few notes and I don't know, I was like in a weird mood.
Can I say two things before we dive into the budget?
Sure.
Two things that I want to say.
Oh, it's really like part of the paragraph.
So this is, I'm addressing directly village residents when I share this. And that is two quotes I'm gonna share with you. Number one is, "It's anticipated that village property taxpayers will experience a reduction in their combined village and town property taxes and water rates based on the fiscal modeling and assumption used in the proposed dissolution plan. The approximate cost savings for a typical single home property is less than $1 per day with or without the application of CTC." That's number one. Number two, "In addition, the village has a number of existing intergovernmental shared services and arrangements that provide services to village residents in a cost-effective manner. As a result of the division of labor and existing shared service agreements, there was not significant cost savings found in merging the services operations." So I just want to remind people who may be watching this on YouTube and village residents in attendance here. You have two people sitting at this table that have a combined experience of this budget alone longer than some of us have been alive as trustees. So their ability to create this budget, their ability to dive in and ensure fiscal responsibility for the village, in my opinion, cannot be questioned. It is unbelievable how much experience they have and how much fiscal responsibility they've taken upon themselves. Thank you.
Of my state, but it's that's why Mr. McGonigal was voted in. Robin Dumas, you've been a fantastic clerk. The dissolution is over, we don't care about the savings or whether it'll emerge, but out there. In my view, as a trustee and a resident of almost 30 years, Mr. Gil Adler hit it on the head. Mr. McGonigal was my nomination and the village has spoken. And our taxes around the whole area compared to Greenville and if you go off the mountain are almost half. So you did a great job, Mr. McGonigal, and so has the whole village of Tannersville. Thank you very much. And one last thing, Mr. McGonigal is talking about responsible growth, not urban sprawl. So let's get some responsible growth and development and we'll all have lower taxes, hopefully. Thank you, Mr. Adler.
Thank you, Portner, and thank you for articulating to the public where there's, clearly I make a million gaps in trying to explain what we're trying to move forward. And that was articulated by an email that I received from a resident that watched my entire meeting last night. I try not to be so long-winded, but we are kind of in a new era where we did, people did want to explore that past two years. And now I think it's our job as elected officials, and I know everyone on this board has campaigned, met with their neighbors, has a vision of things that they need to get accomplished and they want to get accomplished, are heavily vested in this community. And I think share a lot of that vision as far as growth, responsible growth, more young people moving into the community, more children coming into this community full-time, filling up our schools, maintaining it and having a lot of pride in this community. Because I know everyone on this board and I can tell everyone in this audience is heavily vested and has great pride in this community. And I'm gonna stay on my soapbox for at least these two years and remind everyone of that. That that's what's vital, energy as a community is what's, is gonna rise us up. Maybe through troubles sometimes, maybe not. Been here for four decades, things have gone up and down, but I think this is our opportunity still, stage, to make real transitional change with the grants that we've gotten, with the new park, with the solar, with the conductivity, with revitalization of Main Street and some new minds coming in and adding to that pot. I think it's really a great time. I gave like a little overview of this. Unfortunately, they're more public here, but I guess they are watching at home. Just a little statement about what a budget is because people think it is a specific thing. So I just jot this down quickly, quickly, this basic information on municipal budgets. All budgets are a projection which includes anticipated revenues, known revenues, known appropriations, which are called expenses to the village, and undetermined appropriations, expenses that may happen that we have no idea about. Therefore, a fiscal budget is an educated plan for the next fiscal year moving forward. In a budget, we also plan for specific infrastructure and capital improvements along with personal services, personnel services, which is all the employees of the village. The projections for this year, given the economic climate, in my mind, which keeps me up some night, is possible extreme fluctuation on hard goods due to tariffs. Makes this budget particularly more challenging. Two years of deferred maintenance are also an important variable. Interest, bond, and anticipation notes for the big project for our major grants is a temporary expense but will be anticipated in this year and the following year. I personally refuse to jeopardize municipality's standing and put this municipality into fiscal stress. Although I have 25 years of experience of being chief fiscal officer and a proven record of protecting the taxpayers' money, given severe time constraints and not being presented with a tentative budget from the previous administration, I am still comfortable with this proposed budget. Please keep in mind, this is a fluid document. We also, we are also constrained by New York State statute, statute which gave Robin and myself four days to prepare this document. Being sworn in last Monday, four days, four days.
Take a look at this.
So the general fund, the tax levy is below the tax, 2% tax limit, which I already said. We have dedicated employees that I think were maybe, I'm not gonna say anything, that were well deserving of a raise and therefore this board I think was with those raises. So we made the try to make a livable wage for our DPW people, our clerks and employees of the village. So there is an acceptable raise for all the employees along with less of a participation in their health insurance copay. They used to have to pay 20%. Healthcare is skyrocketing, out of office for two years, I could not believe it. But there are employees losing out of their net check $200 a week out of their paycheck, which seemed extreme to me, so we cut that in half because that health insurance cost is like that. That is one of the things that you get out of being a public servant and municipal worker. At least you should have been entitled to health insurance in some form or retirement, some sort of protections. Interest expense budgeted 900,000 up due to rollover, so I already explained that. Roadwork increased along the estimated revenues of CHIPS program, potentially to Upper Lake Road, which we're trying to do this year. Increase in equipment and expenditures, the chemical categories, clerical categories, and new computers and equipment to do Zoom meetings, which was a common theme for everyone that campaigned door to door and got on the phone. They wanted more live interaction, interaction. There are currently 536 registered voters in the village of Tannersville. They're not well represented.
Investing in that kind of infrastructure is expensive.
And is expensive.
Yeah, and it's expensive on the front end, it's not as expensive to maintain it, but you have to invest in the front end.
Right, and we want to try to have it up to date and we're fortunate that we have some IT already employed by the village and they'll be coming in with those proposals. And there is money in this budget for some of those upgrades, for equipment upgrades, hardware and contractual, which would be the software portion of their own maintenance. There is also an initiative to try to streamline payments to the village, water bills, taxes, things of that nature, and we're exploring that also. That was brought on by Mr. Adler and Rebecca, and I think Codeava mentioned, Deputy Mayor mentioned it. So we're trying to streamline and make things more efficient. We don't have those answers as of yet. Well, it's been a week, but we're trying. There are some, you know, increases because of the projects, if anyone, just for a little more explanation. We get a grant from the state, we do that project, we have to fund that project, pay for that project, show that we did it, have it inspected, show the canceled checks. And then within a year, we pray, or two years in my experience, or two and a half years, you get that money back from the state to, as a revenue, but it could be two fiscal years later. During that period, that is the bond anticipation revenue. So we have to take out a note, we have to pay interest on that note until it is paid down by the reimbursement from the state, whatever department has decided to give us that grant. And when you're talking about projects that are a million three, 500, and a million six, you started at, you borrowed $5 million, which may be on the street for a few years. And currently it's at about 4%. So those calculations are in the budget. That is not a permanent expense, that is not a permanent loan, but it is an expense found in this issue.
Let me clarify one more. For those that are not fiscally literate, it is the bank that loans the village the money and the village is paying interest to the bank until such time as the project is complete and the state reimburses the village. I want to make that absolutely clear. So that is the interest that we're seeing. Once we complete the project, the state pays us, we can reimburse the bank the principal and we end. But until such time as the project is complete, we are paying interest to the bank on the principal of the note. Thank you.
And then we're also, Mr. Adler has volunteered or to participate with Robin to have additional people looking for grants and any other board members that want to get into the portal and have ideas and want to explore them. There are grants, voluminous amount of grants that are available without engineering. And those are the grants that you'll be looking at. Other large infrastructure grants and larger projects or building and things like that, they require pre-engineering, which so we'll use our engineers. And we have two or three that the village has been working. Of course, Lamont has been really dedicated and very effective currently for our water infrastructure. So we'll continue to work with them, we'll work with any engineer that wants to get us moving ahead with larger infrastructure. But those require engineering, pre-engineering, the other ones may not. So I welcome all the participation we can and they can be done remotely, all these applications. The water, another real variable. Prices are ballooning for the chemicals required to treat the water. Most pipes, couplers, repair kits are made in China. And when we put out bids for US-made, they were still double in spite of the 145% tariff that currently is going on. So most distributors are going all over the place. We have projects scheduled for this year, which was a perfect timing for the affordable housing. On Spruce Street was two, that is one of, although it's a very sound main, if they are going to do that gigantic project, they're on the hope to put in the 400 feet in front. We're gonna do the 400 feet prior from the bridge leading up to it so that we just continue moving forward with infrastructure in the water and replace that with composite pipe. And those monies are in there. So you can see a possible 6% raise on the water fund and that is the use of water. And I hope it's enough. Okay. Maybe you just got it, but maybe the audience has a possible question on the budget because I make a motion to open the public hearing from the public.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And you guys are the public, Mr. Cookley.
I have just have a question that, something Mr. Adler said. So the interest on the loan is paid by the village until the job has been completed on your side or you've been reimbursed by the state or the federal government?
The latter.
The latter.
The latter.
It's like a gap loan.
No, no, I know what it is, I just wanted clarity because it wasn't clear the way Gil has said it.
It's not the inception date.
Yeah, it's when you get paid. So if they delay you two and a half years, the mayor was, was, was.
Yeah, the worst time was two and a half.
We're stuck at the village on that until they pay us. The big guy always makes money on our money.
That's the way this thing in New York works. Very good. Thank you for clarifying that because we are aware that we are recording all this and we're trying to, I think that's why Mr. Adler's been trying to assist and you're assisting to make as much clarity to the public as possible. It seems long-winded. For me, I'm being redundant in my head, but I'm trying.
Transparency is the greatest.
That's what we're going for.
That's what we're going for.
Yeah. You want to make a motion? No, no, I want to hear from the public. Are there any other questions from the?
It follows this question, what is the percentage on the loan?
Four percent.
Four percent. Oh, that's very good.
That's very cheap for commercial loans. No other comments? Can I make a motion?
Well, wait, I have a question about something that you said previously about the expansion of the village in a very sound way.
Yes.
Right, from finding with growth. Where the village limits are on that map of where, right? And so there are, I don't believe that there are, and correct me if I'm wrong, there aren't a lot of parcels.
130 building lots in the village of Tannersville, according to our current zoning.
That are empty.
That are vacant.
That are vacant. And do they fall in the high density, the what, like you know how they have the three zones?
They are spread out between R1, R2, and R3, and there are commercial boxes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
About 200,000 village taxes will be all completed in one year.
Does that include properties that are double lots but currently only have one house?
It does.
Okay.
So if you own, if you are in.
There's a lot, a lot of that throughout the.
Like Abby's lot.
Yeah.
Abby's lot, Abby's lot is one of the ones that was considered absolutely. Thank you very much, Rebecca.
That's exactly.
So what she, what she asked is, we have a zoning document. When it was created, zoning law, not documents, a zoning law. When it was created, it was based on a master plan that was set up by the community. I had multiple meetings, I reviewed it again today, I'm sorry, reading it, I will give the task of this next board. It was completed in 2003, so it's considered dated. Off that, years to follow, they base what is the master plan is what the vision is for the community. Then they move on to what is a build-out analysis, which I described, of what can the infrastructure handle and what would be a big impact on the community, on the water system, what upgrades, if we had thousands more people living here, a school, and then we analyze all of that. Then they, we drove through the communities and said, boy, on Park Lane, it looks like everyone's about a half acre or a quarter acre, it's already formed, they're already on this land here. That's gonna be residential half acre, quarter acre. But then maybe somewhere on Park Lane, it was two acres that was vacant. Someone bought that parcel and they said, what is its zone? R1 or R2, half acre. So can I divide up that property and build two houses for me and my brother? Yes, you can. This is, this is planned out and mapped out and you can.
Is that, is that the same thing as ADUs?
I'm sorry?
Is that basically the same thing as ADUs?
No.
I don't know that.
No, ADUs are essentially dwelling units, they're, they are not necessarily considered a full living place.
Gotcha.
But they are, they do make a property a multifamily.
Yeah, so what you're talking about is fully zoned.
Oh, fully.
Fully zoned for two residences.
Correct, for regular residents.
When you look at the map, you will see R1, R2, R3, where some of them are five dwellings per acre, some will be two dwellings per acre, some will be one dwelling per acre.
Right, but what ends up happening is some of those dwell, particularly in the high density of Park Lane, Spring Street, and South Main Street, if there are two structures on there, one being a barn or a garage, that's being converted into a huge, that's being converted into a very large, it's being changed, being converted into a, it's being converted into a larger residential property than already was on the, already there.
There's a lot of parameters that prevent that, correct, Mr. Schmears?
There are, there's things within the law that dictate how multifamilies can be created and a lot of law that was built originally as a single family that allow the village to, to kind of have some amount of control over those. It can't just happen. But there's also the other thing, as America, I know, absolutely knows, there are also several properties within the village limits that are still significantly capable of being subdivided to create even more above and beyond 100 and whatever number it was. They're like, when you really talk about what's capable of being building lots, you're probably.
200.
250 plus, I think, within the village.
One of them, one of them is a difficult stretch, one large vacant piece of property.
Yeah, but.
I kind of took some of that off.
Yeah.
But for your concern, and it has been formalized by this board, passports, and now we've been adding more expertise and other experts to this board. For my tenure for the 25 years, starting with Mark Hyer, there was real evaluation of the questions that you had of what was appropriate. Under the, since the zoning law has been passed, everyone that came to accomplish what you're describing, either combining, making it bigger, the law was followed. Setbacks, what was appropriate, what type of water and sewer they had, what their hookups were, if they had split hookups, there are still, they're not grandfathered in, there are still things, situations that violate the zoning law probably in this community. And they become troublesome when they come to this board. We're dealing with them once a month and this board last week had to deal with one where there are problems that are pre-existing to the zoning law that have to be addressed. Who's maintaining the road? What is the road? People that have shared services, they have a front house, they have a cottage in the back, the water goes through the front house and then goes out to the back house. Then my brother moves to Florida and I want to sell the back house. The back house needs its own water, it needs its own sewer, it needs a separate hookup. It can't run through my house and I'm not even related to the guy in the backyard. And then we have a drive with it, I share with my brother, but he moved to Florida and now who's gonna plow it? I don't even come to him, I'm not gonna plow it. Why should I plow? But the front house says, the back house says, but I live here full-time, I want the road plowed. Well, I don't have to have any responsibility. We're dealing with those situations on a regular basis and I appreciate them and I think we're doing our best to when that comes up, when a building permit is coming up, that that landowner knows what their restrictions are, what the law is, what the follows so that we don't, we don't have people looking, saying, well, he's just doing whatever he wants or he does this or he does that. It hasn't been like that for, since the law has been accepted. So I can't remark about anyone else, but since the law has been in place, we really try to do diligence to watch those situations.
I want to emphasize that second to last point, and that's, this board has been sworn in for less, about a week now. And we've already had two incidents where we begun, we are not mediators. We can help bridge the gaps between parties and neighbors, but we've already been approached by two separate parties to begin kind of helping our neighbors build a, a shared, what's called a shared road agreement, where it's multiple neighbors that share a paved road and they use it as their driveways feed into this shared road, but there's no ownership over it. So that's something that we've begun to, we can't take responsibility for it.
No, we can't.
But we are here as a resource to help guide the parties on how to move forward. So that's, we got two of those in the last week.
Just the, we cannot take responsibility for previously created situations.
Thank you, yes.
We will be getting these kinds of recommendations moving forward for the board to make stipulations upon future development.
Because this is an ongoing.
Do not allow.
This is an ongoing adjudication from the prior administration, an ongoing problem. And we're not allowed to give legal advice in that aspect. Thank you, Mr. Schmears, because we have to be very careful on the code and ethics handbook I receive. We cannot be playing games like that because you and I can be sued.
Are there any other questions on, specific to the budget? Anyone has concerns with? I hope we answered your question.
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes.
On the general budget, under I V A two seven seven one, other miscellaneous sources, page 18, can you clarify what that is for $167,500?
The revenues we're going to be receiving for.
I'll let her answer.
The revenues we are going to be receiving for the two smart work grants.
Ah.
Okay.
That was very good, Robin, because that's what I forgot. Don't worry, that was a good question, a board member asked the same question.
Yeah, I mean, it just.
It stings, it stings out and bites your ass.
It should have a.
Should have a star next to it.
It should have a park footnote, yeah, right. I mean.
You're the first one to attend a public hearing the last 25 years. But I heard you're right, I don't put many stars anymore, there's no one else. You're running for mayor two years, I heard.
Okay, that, you know, it was a little glaring, so.
That, for reference, that is a note that.
I understand.
No, no, not just that line item, but in general, it would help, I believe, the public if the board and the clerk and the mayor, if we would provide a little bit more color context into what each line item is.
What annotations.
Yeah.
Oh, we could explain it to you like we just did. We want you to come to the meeting.
I understand.
It's on the recording.
I understand, you know, but for those that don't.
Former mayor, Matt.
It was just glaring.
That's right, that's what I was alluding to, you're running for mayor two years. You reissued them reading.
But that would be awkward.
Right, at the bike ramp, that's. We were talking about the Huckleberry Trail, I said, Matt Leach got the grant for that. I was just blessed with trying to construct.
You know, I think you two would make a great team. It's just levity to make this, make a white.
That was the name of a bar that was behind Crash Place.
It's just levity?
Levity.
You guys have a bar called the Dawn of Crack, and the crack is on.
You digress here.
No, this, this, this looks good. I mean, in a short time, you had to put this together and we have to.
It's very thorough with you, Mr. McGonigal.
Well, I, listen, I am not taking credit for it. I am only taught the vision and once again, Robin had to do the diligence and put it together per my direction of which way we wanted to go. So how she did it, I don't know.
In four days.
Because she did less things, say, up until the day I was sworn in, I could be receiving a budget and I don't know if I'm gonna make anything because I put it in the minutes and I'm really not looking back because they're making me laugh. But the exiting mayor is supposedly the proposed budget for the incoming administration. That did not happen. That's, that's all being said to it, it doesn't matter to me because I'm not even sure I would have looked at it, so. I guess I was blunt.
Underwater company?
Yes.
Maintenance of roads. I don't see too much of anything in here under the line names as in water treatment facility.
Are we talking about a road?
F 5110.1, is that what you're referring to?
No, I'm saying with a different road.
I'm talking about Leach Drive.
Leach Drive, I was gonna say.
For the maintenance and upkeep and upgrade under the contractual agreement. I don't see anything from, anything under here. I don't know if that comes from another place. Something like that.
Are there things that it needs right now?
Excuse me?
Are there things that it needs right now in terms of upgrades?
No, it hasn't been touched in years.
So just, are, so are there things that it needs?
We're losing the road.
The shoulders.
Oh, just like in front of my house.
The culverts, some of the culverts, now it's different because it's, it's not a little road.
No, I know, I understand. It's got the east side agreement, I know, I know. I just, I just couldn't, I couldn't remember.
That isn't very clear.
Yeah.
But I'm just asking, because we've, we've breached this with the last administration and before, and I don't see anything in here, so now through the time to incorporate something for some sort of housekeeping, we could.
What's good is uh, as I described in my opening paragraph, all these budgets are fluid, so in the water budget especially, since they're billing two times a year, if it finds appropriate that we need to expand uh, Leach Drive and do repairs, because do obligations, which certainly weren't evaluated in the last four days, then we could always increase the water budget and the two buildings that will be this next fiscal year and address that, and that's the village's obligation. And I think that's all.
Or on the resources.
Yeah.
Outside the.
Yeah, but those would be the resources because that's what we do, the water plant. I don't, I don't, that's all, and, and uh, this happens to be a legal matter. Yes, it is. So at this point, I think we shouldn't even be remarking about it anymore. Trying to make one remark, like past administration? No. No, I, it doesn't matter, past administration is to pass. Well, he could bring up. And I wasn't being disrespectful, but I just want to say, there is no attorney on this board, there isn't a contractual agreement that's been in place uh, since, I'm gonna just give a quick summary, since Mr. Howard Leach had donated that property and donated that right away and other lands that supplied the surface water to the village of Tannisville. There have been different legal opinions and certainly the owner of the property surrounded it has his legal opinion, but all I'm saying is that it will clearly be addressed, not ignored, but it will not be done by me. Because I do not have Esquire after my name or around my name. So particularly with the issues, I would formally indicate your position to the village board, uh, what, what you would progress, and the legal team will reevaluate that contract and put the, wherever the burden lies on the board or whatever, I'm just telling you because it's, there's no funds in this to repair that road, is meaningless to me because it's a water road. If we need to generate more funds in the future, do it a contractual obligation, we will. If we don't, we don't, but right now, I think that's all that can be said, because this is a legal discussion, not a, not a budget.
Where it's a legal discussion, if there's a contractual agreement, nothing was ever donated to anybody.
Like I said, so I could have, I could have bespoke, I put the land.
I just want to make sure that it, down the road, when, I mean, it needs to be done, I think we all come to agree that it needs to be cleaned up and be done, but it, it's not, it, I, I'm being unlike blindside here with a legal, a legal issue when something has been in place for this many years, and all of a sudden it's, it's, it's not? Because of somebody's interpretation of something? Okay, so.
It is, well, for the record, it is not my interpretation. It would only be a legal interpretation of what the contractual obligations are of the village of Tannisville to that road. That's all. That will be explored. I recommend that you formally request the village your concerns, upgrades, and how that should be handled. That would be the cleanest way.
Excellent.
Uh, because then at least it would be, before this board, it would be evaluated, it would be discussed. That's all I'm saying. Of course, the contract, I, I am aware of the contract for the record. I'm aware that there is a contract in there. I never took a class in contracts, ever. And uh, as a doctor with a license, they tell you never impersonate a lawyer. It's really true.
Different, different letters to write under your name, yeah.
And I, and I don't think, I'm being disrespectful, Matt, I'm just saying that that's, that's my current position over the four days and I, to tell you the truth, I have not driven a road. I have not driven a road, so I, I, I really have nothing to add to this discussion, other than if there are obligations, within two minutes, I can figure out how to find money to do whatever the obligations of the village do. That's cut and dry. That's why I'm not laboring the board.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions on the budget? How can I? Mr. Kelly, sorry.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the budget, please.
I get to close the public, I'm sorry. Any more questions? Make a motion to close the public hearing on the budget?
I second it.
You second it?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion? No?
Well, I make a motion to put the budget to vote.
I second. All right, I'm making a motion to open our regular meeting.
I would second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And now we have a motion on the floor of Mr. Kelly to.
I would like to make a motion to prioritize the budget.
Second.
I second it, listen, Rebecca.
Rebecca, second it. Uh, any discussion?
Oral, oral good.
All those in favor? Oh, yeah.
Aye.
The budget is passed, which is only a working document, like I said, so.
It's very fluid.
It's good, fast work.
Four, four days. I want to thank the board, just for the record, uh, because now we're really recording everything and there's only a few people in the audience, I hope more people are viewing it. Uh, this has been a very active, intuitive, smart board who, I said it earlier, but I think it should be said again, their interest of the quality of life of this community and they're putting in their time, this is public service. This is not a job, this is public service for everyone that's elected at this level. And probably one of the most important public service positions that you can have, because you have direct effect on your neighbor's lives and your own lives. There's, there's nothing in between, there's no safety net, so your decisions do affect people directly. So thank you for all your interest and phone calls and text messages to me to try to clarify. And I'm sure with the energy that you guys are putting in, uh, you'll be right at the speed on all of this and some of this weirdness in the budget will be all second nature.
It's a very dynamic board, it is.
All right, we still have more, uh, a little more business to do. Robin, did you end up getting vouchers in?
Yes.
Did you pass them around yet?
Yeah, we have.
There's three, there's three people? Can, if you haven't reviewed these, we already have signatures, but, did you see? There's a few vouchers, I'm gonna move while you, in case someone didn't review that.
We already did.
Everyone reviewed it?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, so we have to make a motion to uh, pay those additional vouchers?
I make a motion.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We had a sign permit for a property that was here at the Penningmore last, uh, there was a missprint on the application, calling it a backlit sign, uh, or a frontlit sign. It's actually an unlit sign, filling the vacancy of the spot where the sign did exist. I had to make a motion, I would just give the sign permit.
Second it.
Second a motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
So carry. We need a secret resolution? Did you have any comments?
No comments on crazy side numbers?
Resolution for the conductivity project.
Oh, the conductivity?
Yeah.
I was very interested in seeing that bill, Mr. Gugnog.
And then if you get that little land.
So, the conductivity is one point three million and thirty thousand. Uh, to add sidewalks predetermined under the D R I, uh, the, the, depending on what the costs are, it goes as a priority, starting on South Main, connecting to Upper Lake Road, going as far down as you can possibly, connecting to the existing sidewalk at that intersection of Railroad and South Main, turning into Spruce, carrying it to uh, the Rupco Project and Spruce Street.
Oh, wow.
Rupco is required to put their own sidewalks in, it was under a Z B A order, there are stipulations, like I described earlier about replacing a pipe in front of their uh, new housing development. Uh, they're also putting a brand new sidewalk, so we don't want just one piece of sidewalk there. It's illogical that we at least bring it back to that Culver Bridge, formerly a bridge, now a culvert, uh, which is about twelve hundred feet further down from where the Rupco Project line is. Uh, so we, the conductivity piece of the D R I was creating a safe walking community. And as I reread the master plan that was passed in two thousand and three, two pages of conductivity, safe pedestrian walking and more sidewalks, was part of the master plan twenty-three years ago, long before the D R I, so it's interesting that people have been talking about uh, safe pedestrian traffic for that long and uh, has always been cost prohibitive, but now we got the big grant, so it's right in line with everything that we were trying to accomplish. And this board, uh, even doing the lights to increase safety and for pedestrians, increased streetlights, which was really shared by almost everyone on some of the blocks that we added, is consistent with that master plan back in two thousand and three and also consistent what residents want it, so we're finally getting somewhere with some of these initiatives, so. Uh, we do have certain things to pass under seeker.
Lead is declaring.
What, lead agency?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's it? Yeah, we're just gonna declare lead agency.
Declaring the lead agency and saying that you're being served.
Right.
I'll make a motion.
Make a motion, that Tannisville will be lead agent.
As a type one action.
As a type one action.
Tannisville will be lead agent as a type one action for seeker.
Terrific, second?
Second.
Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Rebecca, I think Rebecca was second. See if you guys really are getting up some. We have a candidate, tried to fly for a Z B A, who's been a long-term thing, trying to get more anticipation, it's great. Um, I don't know, the gentleman is uh, well-respected, retired, probably has availability.
Can I have some?
He's not retired.
Can I have some context here? We have a Z B A board, the village had a Z B A board of three seats.
Four.
What is the Z B A?
We, we have three seats.
What is Z B A?
Z, zoning board.
Zoning board of appeals. Zoning board of appeal, you, you were, you were describing, when you, if you had come to this board and, and there was a problem with something that you want to do on your property and the zone, uh, the planning board, the zoning board, which is village board, you didn't like our ruling, you could make application and go to the Z B A and say, I think they're wrong, or I have a hardship and there are certain contingencies that you could approach that board, which is separate, not under our authority, to make a determination if you're correct, under their guidelines. So we have a. The gentleman in front of you is the uh, Z B A chairperson.
So we have a board of three seats, and that was increased to four seats?
Five, increased to five.
We only filled four. So this is the fifth seat.
And this candidate is definitely qualified. Do we have a name, please?
Doctor Patrick.
What is meaning?
And Mr. Schmears, you hold him in high regard, don't you?
Sure.
Cause he's my name and I hold him in high regard also. Do we have a motion to uh, point him to the board? I would like to do a motion to appoint him to the Z B A board as a fifth member.
I'll second it.
Second it?
For a term.
For a term of years, I think?
So there are five returns, but the problem is, is they're supposed to be rotated. Do you know where your rotations are sitting at right now?
I will have to look that up.
Okay, so for a term to be determined, but it will be filling the term of whatever.
The open.
Upon him the open rotation of the concern. I would, oh yeah, I, I would have felt his would have been the longest one since he's just getting in.
No, because they're, they're supposed to be rotated, so basically one of them, like.
One is a sub?
No, 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 so.
Two or so?
When you have five.
One overlaps.
One, every year, one of them expires.
Yes.
So we gotta figure out what we set for the other four, to figure out where this one fits.
All right, to be determined, word of end is the same.
So does that make five?
That makes five.
Yes.
Sure, it's a full board.
It completes the circle, finally.
Right now.
I won't say. Okay, so that's to be determined.
Right this second, okay.
That can work. We. It's a big circle, Joe. Uh, my question is, are any board members available on May eighth?
I am available on May eighth.
Probably, I'm gonna have to check.
All right, we currently don't have anything scheduled for May first, but we may have things in the hopper and we didn't want to rush, I hate to change meetings, it was uh.
You gotta get your vote for your Z B A person first, right?
No, we did that already.
May eighth is just another one.
Everyone said yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Other people?
I'm not spaced out. No, he's in, he's a nice man. Uh, anyway, I'd like to change the date to the eighth, if you guys.
So you're saying changing the Monday the fifth?
We'll have to meet on the first.
Monday the fifth to Thursday the eighth. Or, well, May first.
May versus.
Thursday, May first to Thursday the eighth.
Was planning, which is now blank, but I thought to keep the momentum going, we would have a planning meeting on the eighth. I feel that there will be planning business.
Well, there, there's at least one thing.
Oh, there'll be at least one thing. And at worst case scenario.
And that'll give us time for.
Is that for the? We will start reviewing the master plan, where you guys will have time to read it.
Yeah.
And then we could at least have a quick discussion on how we could start updating that master plan because the class that we took yesterday
Uh huh.
Has created an urgent situation to make certain amendments in a timely manner. And which would help fulfill some of our other initiatives.
What time is that meeting, May?
We do five thirty, right? Are we five thirty?
Are we talking about today?
So we'll be five thirty on May one to May eight?
Correct. Yeah, good.
Are you?
It's fluid, it's very, very fluid.
Yes.
Oh, so that's why I'm not. This is, this is planned, the other thing?
You're kidding, one of them pays? That's unbelievable, that's wolf's speech, fantastic.
You're welcome. I have a draft procurement policy, uh, we realized that it was thirty years old. Uh, anyway, we've updated it for your review and last time was like a little half-assed, you can see my numbers I plugged in to make a little.
Can I ask a question for clarification?
Sure.
What is the difference between purchases for commodities, equipments, or goods and purchases for ordinary services?
Calling up a lawyer, calling up uh, consultants.
So services are?
Services are.
Services are like an accountant and an order and goods, physical objects, okay, like.
Like a service.
The flower baskets or whatever, yeah, okay, okay.
Hard, and the other ones are hard goods.
Hard, hard, physical objects, most.
Services.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I think it looks good.
I, I think I, I brush it by, uh, Miss, uh, I know that Deputy Mayor was a part of it, he's in construction all the time. Some of the things are, are good controls, but some of them are just so outdated, you know, three requests for a hundred dollars. Oh, that's pathetic.
With, with, with inflation, it wouldn't have been a, it would have been a business.
Yeah.
Yeah, so with inflation and it sounded more obstructionist than, than productive.
Correct.
Investing process, yeah.
And the reason why they put these stipulations and all, let's say, safety levers, usually because of grief. And the bottom line is to buy a lawnmower for eight thousand dollars, I don't think you need eight seal bids. Sometimes you, something breaks, you have to get it tomorrow, or as Mr. McGonagall said in a conversation on telephone, Sunday at twelve oh two A M, if we get a lawnmower on Labor Day for sale for sixty-nine hundred instead of twelve thousand, let's go to Lowe's and pick it up because it's on sale for one day, so therefore go to the check and pick it up instead of losing that sale price.
Yeah, the cost of doing business is higher and why is slow at that?
And you would know that because you're a business owner and I appreciate your business, thank you.
You want to make a motion to adopt these changes to our procurement policy? Rebecca, please.
Yeah, make a motion to adopt these changes to our procurement policy.
I second that motion, please. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You know, because we're all voting the same way, this is a very tough board, by the way, very learned board.
And you know the way thing is?
Now they are.
But the big I said, we're all diametrically different positions for the law. We'll get more.
I, I have to.
Is that cool by now?
I had to say something for the record. Uh, a, a dear friend of mine saw a recent publication, I was gonna let social media and press, just since the, the world changes every second. But a few weeks ago, uh, front page of a newspaper, uh. referred to me as being a corrupt mayor. I take great offense, I wa, I didn't wanna repeat it, I, I didn't think I had to. Those claims are false, those claims are repugnant, they, uh, hurt me deeply, uh, affected me deeply. And then to have a friend of, uh, forty-five years approach me, uh, reading it, and went to practice last week and win them, heard it again. Uh, I did my best to serve this village for a long time. You're not always going to agree with my policies, my plans, my vision or anything. I have not garnered a nickel to benefit myself, my family, or anyone, uh, related to my wife's business. I was accused of all types of things, I don't even know what they meant. But corrupt means that I was robbing the taxpayers, as mayor. I have never, you didn't like my decisions, that's not robbing the taxpayers. But I find it repugnant and lifeless, and I will explore that. But he told me that it was imperative that I put it on the record to tell people. Those claims are false and disgusting, and had they not been, you have sworn people to this village board, to that village office, uh, to oversight by a C P A, oversight under my tenure, two times ordered and controlled from New York State had come down. Uh, I think I've already would have made the front page with, uh, a guy dressed in blue, had any of those had any validity. So I said it at the last meeting much milder, that we should be careful about our neighbors and what we say, and how we say, and not, not be reckless. Uh, that, that was reckless and appalling, and I'm sorry I took up your time, but it should be in the record, because, uh, uh, that's all I feel, and it was really disturbing to me.
I'd like to make a comment quick about it, I made the quote on newspaper, it was despicable. I saw the ex-mayor musician today, I asked him why he would say such a stupid statement, I met him at the second uncle. He said he could say what he wants, it was dis- despicable telling Mr. McGonigal to the public that he was corrupt. I read it, I was quoted, and Mr. McGonigal has been a friend of mine for all over twenty years, and let's get this record straight. I would never back anybody that's corrupt, I know it's hurt him and his family. And that's all I gotta say.
Well, thank you, and thank you for letting me have that time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for clarifying that sentence.
Thank you, um, we have privilege on the floor, maybe there's some happier business, Mr. Coopley?
I'd just like to, uh, mirror what, uh, Matt said. I'm sorry you had to, uh, share what was going on in terms of that individual, and, um, I concur that if there had been something, it wouldn't have been blue or gray, and it was neither, so obviously, it didn't happen. Um, in terms of, um, just for something for the meetings, and your question kinda tripped me. Uh, those of us that are in government are using acronyms, and so we say them all the time, they flow off the end of our tongue. But those for the public who don't come to all of our meetings, aren't necessarily up to speed with the D R I is, or a Z B A, things like that. I love the way that you were handling the beginning of the meeting in terms of transparency and explaining things. I think that it would go a long way with the direction that you're going, that as people are joining these meetings, that, yeah, take the extra moment to bring the background in, to explain to the folks, so everybody's comfortable with what's going on, and they're not trying to play catch-up in their mind when they're at the meeting, so. I, I thought that the meeting, the way you were running it was great in terms of that little bit of background and stuff. But I think acronyms, and we can just all remind ourselves. So when Mr. Kelly uses an acronym, you'll remind Mr. Kelly, uh, what the D R I is or something.
Or I'll say zoning board of appeals instead of Z B A like you would.
Affirmative.
So you've got it this way.
David, this really was said.
Yeah.
Accessibility is really important if you want engagement, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, that comforts them.
Absolutely.
Because we're all in the learning process.
And I wanna piggyback off.
You're welcome.
I wanna piggyback off those comments, and that is, everyone sitting here is always available to everyone in the village. And that is, some of you have our cell phone numbers, if you don't, you can reach out to us, you can reach out to us. Through Robin's office, we are always accessible to you, anytime we are needed, there is no such thing as a stupid question. So please, by all means, whatever questions you have, ask us at any time.
I may as well close it with S T R. S T R is not a disease, it's called a short-term rental, we'll be approaching that.
I'm sorry?
I, I know you're joking, but you said short-term rental, and we'll be approaching that.
Probably on May eighth, maybe, if the mayor puts a somewhere about there. May eighth would be another planning session, so it might be a good idea. Uh, the board has been given a few examples of, uh, a few laws, there's been more discussion. We went for a, a meeting yesterday with the Department of State. They did a little slideshow on short-term rentals, a little bit of their updated info and take, so it gave us another overview. Although it was very consistent with what my personal goals for short-term rentals were, was basically their slideshow, which was, we have to have a, a safe dwelling, we have to have propagation removal, we have to have the ability to control unruly households or dwellings, uh, if they're overcrowded, become unsafe, noise, parking, snow removal, basic quality of life issues to their neighbors, depending where these short-term rentals are. Those were my main concern, and also having an avenue of expedient contact to address the problem when it's, when it occurs, or if it occurs. And then a legislative, uh, a, a way to prosecute bad actors. So that was basically what the state laid out yesterday, which was consistent with what the law has basically been distributed to everyone.
Saturday.
So it's Saturday.
I know, every day.
I haven't slept in three days. Well, well, for the record, we were all there.
So is there the possibility with all of these laws require enforcement? So is, you know, like if they're, if, if the garbage isn't removed, or if, you know, things like that? So is there the thought of putting in perhaps a permit, um, for individuals who wanna do short-term rentals to sort of supplement it enforcement?
Correct, there would be issue of permit, that would have, uh, all the things that I just had contained in their permit with the contact, and then we would have the ability for enforcement. Right now enforcement is a little more vague and a little more difficult without it.
Cause you don't have anything to stand on right now, because we don't have a law in place, so if we pass a law, then we can enact permits and enforce them.
Right, okay, okay.
But, but, but I know although the enforcement piece, and who's enforcing, who regulating, is part of the details of this law. Cause you could hire outside people to monitor, we could do it in-house, we could try to pass it off through town. Yeah, it's a myriad, it, it does get a little more complicated than my, my goal of, uh, uh, passing this law, that's my goal. People may wanna add to that, but my goal with those basic things and the complaints.
Where you have the law is happening on the eighth of May.
We're gonna have, we, I believe I will put it on the.
You'll have a discussion.
I'll have a discussion, it will not be done by then.
Okay.
We're trying to move it forward, but we have to go through all the steps so that we can get it right.
We'll be closer.
Yeah.
We'll be very close.
Probably June.
Will you, will you have vacation, you know what you can do? Just be a vacation. Hunter has one.
No, I know, I know.
And Lexington has one.
I'm aware of the two.
And so we're gonna have our own, correct, Mr., is that what you're saying, Mr.? We have to have our own, because ours is gonna be complimentary to our current zoning law, which makes some of the wording legalese slightly different, because it has to match it. And actually, with the proposal that's given to this board, this board would be the receiving applicants of an Airbnb registration.
Okay.
And go over the things that I just said, when they fit those parameters, then they would be listens, listed or permitted. And they would be reviewed, and, uh, some of the other experts would look at it for parking, these are, things that I just described, airproof dumpsters.
Right.
Hours of operation.
Right.
So I tell you face to face, these are the rules of your Airbnb.
For every applicant.
For every applicant, they tell this whole board that they understand the rules.
And they're held to the rules.
Okay.
I think that's a good way of delivering, huh?
I think it's fantastic.
No more.
I'm worried for you.
It's why I didn't sleep.
I, I, if that's what, if you wanna approach it that way, there's some good to that, but I'm, like, I don't know what your actual account of S T, like, I have to look at.
I know you're okay. You think it's gonna be burdened so we can. That's why I tried to.
I'm not against it, I'm just worried about you guys' capabilities to handle that.
I, uh, would agree with that, actually.
Well, that's why I.
Not in a angle.
We can handle it, but it's, it's an additional scope of work on top of what we've already committed to, and that, I, I'm concerned about that.
It's just that, like, for you guys to have to review that every month, going through, and then have to actually.
I agree.
Cause you can't, you can't even group them in a person, you have to, you have to do one.
Yeah, no, I, I hundred percent agree.
That's what I gotta figure out.
To be discussed, maybe we have any other.
To be discussed in detail, maybe.
Oh, but thank you for your questions and points.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. We have Airbnb owners here.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, uh, the town of Hunter, right?
Yes.
Has the law.
Correct.
Short-term rental, so why can't, if there's a. That is a little.
Adopt their law.
Yeah.
Because we have zoning, and their law doesn't fit into our zoning law. We have a law, zoning, which tells you how you operate, your setbacks, everything else in your dwelling, but the legalese, the way it is written, the law in Hunter, we couldn't just adopt it, because.
Has to be my, we have to.
It's basically. The legalese has to be different, to fit into our zoning law. And I don't think, currently, it's gonna be more overbearing, or, uh, much different than that.
The intentions are the same intentions.
The same. He has.
Which is parking, safety, garbage, noise.
Noise. Any common, any common.
A hundred percent of it.
I'm just saying, for the board, whether this gentleman has Airbnbs in the village and in the town, so he'd like a little consistency. To make his life a little easier.
Well, we can.
Not easier, but it makes sense, yeah.
So the, a question about between now and the May eighth meeting, will the draft that we, that was circulated at the previous meeting, will, will that be revised?
I, I haven't.
Now and then, or, I sent you notes that I had aggregated, I don't know if you've looked at them yet.
Is this a past public hearing? No, she's just asking on the May eighth, I think we're just gonna have to meet sometime that week, and, and then try to implement some of them.
Yeah.
But we've been just overwhelmed.
I want, I want to add one more point, and that is, if you look, for example, I'm just gonna use the town of Lexington as an example, they have passed an S T R law. They have since passed an amended S T R law, and two years have passed, they have now passed a second amendment to that S T R law. So what may be applicable, and what may be, what may feel like the right thing to do, we now have the advantage of that learning curve to evaluate our neighbors and see what works and what doesn't work, and now we can create one law without having to amend it year after year after year.
I don't amending it, at least.
They don't amend it anyway, so hopefully, we have at least a little bit shorter of a learning curve compared to our neighbors. That's, that's, uh.
I'll probably look into my neighbor to love called Hunter.
Their, their document is like sixteen pages long, the draft that we circulated is half that, and it, it's, it's sparse, there, it, it leaves a lot out, and it, it has room for improvement.
Our draft is.
Our draft.
Yeah, that's, 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 thank you, thank you.
Hunter's is thorough, and it is actually, I mean, I understand that the zone, there are zoning differences, but it is, it is a good document, it covers, it covers a lot. I kind of did a comparison of the two, and I sent notes that were, were my summary, and also, uh, pulled out of the minutes from the S T R meeting that, that the previous administration had had, to make sure that people's concerns that were aired in the public hearing were all included in the notes. So you have that, um, hopefully, if you want to circulate it to the other board members, you can, I didn't feel like I should do that, um, but I, but I tried to front-load the work to make it easier for.
You can definitely share with the other board members, first of all, you're not having really, what, what is the rule on that?
Technically speaking, if you're, like, we could.
If she makes one email and sends it to Cody.
I, I was like, I was like, oh, I could send individually to people.
And if I went to Gil, I would go to the jury.
Take a, take a, take a time to discuss.
Yes, I could have done that, I, I opted to send it to Lee.
She can send.
Send it out.
You don't wanna soak his authority, he is not you, thank you.
Correct.
You guys cannot go back and forth in the emails, have me a conversation.
I don't know what email is, we don't have it on my telephone.
But so anyway, I opted, I opted to send it to Lee, have him disseminate it, if he, if he, if he just, if he decided to.
Right now, until they have village emails, that's the best way to do it. I understand why you don't want it to necessarily go that way, but currently, with the way it's going, that is the most advisable way to do it for everybody's protection, first off. Second off, especially while they don't have village emails, there should be no conversations.
There is no conversation on my phone.
Meaning, she can send out a recommendation, but nobody should comment on her recommendations. Gil can send out recommendations, but there should be no comment on his recommendations. A comment on a recommendation should not happen until you're sitting here together. That's gonna cover you under open meeting law and under all of those.
Is that D I C O M or?
Distribution and no communication.
Correct.
All right, so we've come up with another question. As citizens, all your comments to the law should go to the village office?
Yes.
And then.
So I should send it to Robin?
To Robin.
Okay, cause I sent it to you, I'll send it to Robin.
We will meet on the eighth to go over those comments and try to figure out where we stand.
You should do it at your workshop. Yeah, we're.
Workshopping.
Because that's why I kept the meeting on the planning meeting, cause there's so much work to be done. And so I wanna keep that planning meeting, even if there's not planning business, so we, on that day, we do this.
Yeah.
We plan.
And also, by having them separate from the.
There's no collusion.
Board meeting, we now have time to actually.
Just address that, for now, you know, not, get it done.
We're still learning about, about order of operations, and so I'm still trying to figure that out, but I'll send it to Robin tomorrow.
Some of it has changed, because I, I didn't have a lot of correspondence through emails before, and then thinking about whether or not it was a quorum. We don't wanna be called corrupt.
It's not, that's the problem.
It's not.
Is that email communication is outside of open meeting, and that can create issues if you're not doing it properly. So that's what, what I'm trying to have you guys avoid, is getting to a situation where you're having non-proper communications in a non-open meeting forum.
It's called collusion.
If, 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 if what's going on is that Rebecca is going through and leaking information out of a couple of the drafts, and maybe the town of Hunter law, and putting it, and, and putting it into a sheet, where it's all within that, and then sharing it.
That's fine.
And then there's no discussion whatsoever, that's where it's at.
That's legal.
Then in your workshop, then in your workshop, you have in front of you, you have in front of you, the collated information, and you're able to go through, hey, we like the verbages, that, no, I don't like the verbages. Oh, it shall be shall, not will, it will be.
For the record, I didn't go into that kind of detail.
But back and forth is repeating the problem.
Well, thank you.
As long as there's no reply.
Just for the record, in our Zoom over there, uh, long-term public servants, Mr. Coopley, thank you for your input, also a board, town board member who passed the zoning law, uh, for the town of Hunter, right? I would assume.
Passed the S T R laws.
Uh, short-term rental laws.
And former school board president have a deal with that in litigation.